Calling to order the business meeting for the Diamond Lake School District. Uh, 76th Board of Education, goal policies. Armenta?
Here.
El? Here. Hauptman?
Here.
Candela?
Here.
Juan?
Here.
Lizetta?
Here.
Solomon?
Here.
Please rise. Glad to meet you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments? There being no public comments, we move on to presentations. Dr. Jiraka, I think you are up.
Yes, well, thank you. Tonight, I'm going to take just a few moments to have a conversation regarding the Illinois report card and Diamond Lake School District 76 report card as it correlates to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And then I'll also share with you some of the data from our first STAR assessment benchmark. The word benchmark, meaning we provide benchmark assessment three times a year in the, um, in the fall, in the winter, in the spring. This is the first time we did a district STAR assessment, so there's some data there I'd like to share. If at any point you guys have questions or there are some nuances in terms of language, please don't hesitate to ask me. I'll try to clarify as best I can. The Illinois School Report Card makes significant note of our different student groups that are listed here. So the first slide I wanted to share with you is just sort of a snapshot of what our student groups are in this district. And you can see that we're about two-thirds Hispanic. We have about 21% white, approximately 6% Asian, 3% black, and about 3, 3.2% two or more races. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment as it really relates to our report card. I also wanted to share with you our low-income percentages. So we're approximately 60% low-income, and the state is about 48% low-income. What qualifies a student for low-income is that of their free reduced lunch status. So anyone who has applied for free or reduced lunch or has a public aid card will automatically be identified in our student information system as a low-income student. And so, as we look at our school report card, the way each one of these subgroups performs also gives us our school rating. The first slide that I have relates to attainment. So this is individual student groups and their attainment as they met or exceeded standards according to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness in English Language Arts. So you can see there's a discrepancy between our white, Asian, and non-low-income students who outperform state averages, and we have some challenges with low-income EL Hispanic and blacks students not performing at or above state averages. You see the same trend in, that's consistent with math as well. Again, you see white, Asian, and non-low-income students outperforming state averages where our other subgroups are not keeping pace with state averages. What's new this year and unique is that we have now, with the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, something I think that's really shows the strength of some of our program, programming, and that is student growth percentile. So this is something new. We haven't seen this in the past. 50% of our school report card ranking is based on student growth. So basically what this is, is it compares students' growth to that of their peers nationwide. I should say statewide in this case. The STAR assessment is nationwide. The IAR is statewide. So for example, if a student has a SGP student growth percentile of 90, it means his growth from one test to another was better than 90% of the students at a similar achievement level in that same grade. So this is new. It helps us really gauge whether or not our students are growing or not. I think some of the exciting news that we have is that all of our subgroups perform above state averages when it comes to student growth. So all of our subgroups are growing faster than state averages in, in English Language Arts. Any questions at this point?
Sure. Can you tell me about the timeframe?
Sure.
Of the next these percentages?
The assessment is only given once per year, and it, it gauged, uh, this assessment was given in March of last school year. It gauged each individual student growth from March of 2018 to March of 2019.
So Steve, those, so that growth data then is kid for kid? If, like, it's that individual, it's not a more like conglomerate of kids? It is on a per-kid basis? In other words, if a kid wasn't here in March of 18, but was here in, didn't take the IAR in March of 18, but did take it in March of 19, it's not on the growth?
You know what, Mr. Candela? I don't know that I can speak to that. I'm not 100% sure if they didn't take that individual student data from their previous district because we do have state identifiers and, and...
Absolutely.
It may, it may not have mattered if they are with us or not from March of 2018.
Okay.
I, I'm not 100% sure on that. For some reason, I want to think that we were still gauged from year to year. I could be wrong, though. I can look into that.
Sort of a similar...
Sure.
When we look at those previous, like, subgroups and performances in subgroups, do we have any indication of the time in the district for those kids and where they're performing? Is that accounted for and broken out anywhere? Just to know that, if a particular student or a particular group of students, how, how much of that is a reflection on our instructional programs? Or how much of it is a reflection of gaps that they have because of...
Right.
...districts they previously decided?
Yeah, that's a great question. I am not 100% sure, considering this is just the first year that we've had this growth data piece, and the IAR has been here for what I think this is our fifth year that we conducted this assessment, and it's changed each and every year.
Even for the, but even for like the attainment, because how reflective, when we look at that attainment data in the earlier slides?
Yeah, I don't know that I have the, the data that's provided to me through the Illinois Report Card doesn't give me longitudinal data for our specific students. I would have to match up those individual students. So what I would essentially have to do is go back to our ALHINE data that we've had for several years and match up those students. But beyond that, I don't know how far I could go back. I would honestly have to dig a little bit deeper to find out that answer. Yeah, and I know where you're, I know exactly where, you know, the, the spirit of your question is, it's to gauge and understand those kids that are with us who have not been subject to mobility in and out of our district. How are those students who have been with us for long periods of time compared to those students who are in and out? Yeah, I completely understand the spirit of that question, yeah. I don't know that I, I have a perfect answer, an answer for you at this moment. Sure.
Dr. Jiraka, if you could go back three slides. So that one and then the next one, it seems like, are we reading it right when basically about a third of our students meet or exceed in English?
Language arts.
In English Language Arts, and less than 20, around 20% of our students meet or exceed in math?
Correct. You're absolutely correct.
Which is, which is below the state average.
It is below the state average, correct.
Can I extend you that one second?
Sure.
If you compare that to the previous year or previous two years, are we trying to improve, say?
Our percentages for, um, meeting or exceeding have decreased year over year for about the last three or four years by about 1% or 2% in each one of these areas. I would also caution, though, that the assessment has also changed each and every year. I would love to say it's apples to apples, but each and every year we've conducted the, first it was the Park, I believe, for the first three years. The assessment changed in each one of those years. And I think one of the things that was the catalyst for change moving towards an Illinois School Report Card that focused on growth rather than attainment was recognizing that each one of our students has a unique starting point, so to speak, which is why I think they break out this data by subgroups because there tends to be some trends that, that correlate with our student performance.
Yeah, I hope so. So since the assessment has changed over here, how are they determining that SGP? Because if you're looking at what percentile or whatever you scored at on Park, for example, and now you're looking at what percentile you're scoring at the IAR, is that really, are you really able to get a true measure of growth there? Like, is that accurate?
Well, I will say this, there is some consistency between Park and IAR. They're the same company. Pearson is running the show, but the assessment, the number of assessment items, the time spent for each category, ELA and math, has shifted. So I would say that there's some general correlation between year over year. I would also be cautious about hanging my hat on any one specific assessment, which is why I think we utilize so many different tools in our district, not just the IAR component. But, you know, also too, I, I think a little bit about the reliability of some of the assessment items, because when you dig a little bit deeper into, into some of the assessment items, you recognize that a student's performance on a computerized test is not necessarily gauged. I, I think completely accurately whether or not they can either read or perform or write. And sometimes there's a lot, there's a lot of background knowledge, I think, that impacts our students. You might be able to give one of our students who may not have a ton of background knowledge on a specific topic, a reading sample, and they can perform well if they know that topic. But, and certainly you're gauging reading in that moment. But if I then take that same task, that same reading task, and shift it to a topic that they may not know about, they don't have the background knowledge, they may not perform as well. So the question becomes, can they read and understand, or can they read and understand a specific topic? There's some, uh, there's some room for error in some of those assessment items, which is, which is why I think it's important to, one, to ask these questions, but two, to understand the nature of some of these assessments. But, I mean, these are, these are great questions.
With the, with the growth, it shows us, it shows us a little bit higher than average. Now, it seems that with, with the growth, though, and with our benchmark, with that level of growth, we would still be, or it would still take a lot of time at that, at that rate before we would get to a, how would you interpret?
Yeah, you, you make a great point.
The combination of the benchmark and the growth metrics.
So think about it this way. Child comes into our school, right? No matter where they're starting from, on average, they will make one year's growth. Sort of like the process that we put them through and expect them to make. But when a kid comes in, we have, let's say, we have 66% of our kids who are coming into kindergarten not kindergarten-ready, or we have kids that are two or three grade levels behind in language. You have to assume that those students have to make a year and 25% growth in order to make up for that one year over a four-year span if they're just one year behind. So that's, I think that is the, the luxurious task of education, taking kids from where they start, depending on how far behind they may be, and increasing their performance year over year. To exceed one year's growth, to close the gap that they're, that they are behind when they start, that, and that is, in essence, our challenge.
Can I paraphrase something?
Sure.
That was extremely helpful, and I guess maybe one of the, one of the keys is where are they when they leave, let's go, or, you know, when they, when they graduate? Because there's always going to be a new influx of folks that we have to, I guess, catch up.
Yeah.
But the key is, are they ready for high school when they, when they leave? And I guess that, that is the, or at least one of the...
Yeah, one of the questions.
One of the gauges of, of, of success.
Yeah.
And, and if they are, then, um, then these are helpful metrics, and, and they certainly demonstrate the challenge.
Well, and I think too, and it's not in this slide, but over the previous years, I've shared the math data growth, and you'll notice that between our, our kindergarten and eighth-grade years, we significantly, significantly reduced the number of students that were below the 50th percentile to above. So we typically moved about 20% of our kids from below to above that 50th percentile to above the average. So we, we know that we're closing the gap. Some of the challenges, however, relate to some of our, our language services. We do have in place a dual-language program, which is super, I'm super proud of, and I love the program, but in some ways, it does stymie the English growth for some of our students. But we know at the end of the day, to have a rich language might be more important than their assessment. And so there's some of those balances that we also take into consideration, too. Having a student who has a seal of bili literacy, but maybe not an SAT of 32, might be a trade-off, you know, depending on, on the way you look and view education. And as we sit here, you know, with eight people on the Board of Education, we all might have various views as to what we believe a valuable education may be. You know, so, um, those are, those are some, you know, some of the little nuances that go into standardized testing. I mean, there certainly are some nuances there. If I may, this was the ELA portion for student growth percentile. So again, all of our students were able to move forward above state, above state averages in growth for English Language Arts. When we move to the next slide, which is math student growth percentile, we have all of our students who are able to exceed state averages with the exception of English Language students and our African-American population. One of the things that I think that this is also a testimony to is the resources we put forth in both our language programs, our English Language and Spanish Language Arts programs, and our EL resource programs. So students who are labeled EL, meaning they had filled out a home language survey that said that they spoke a language other than English, and then were screened using the model and qualified for EL services, are given additional reading minutes and, in English. Or they are given the opportunity to be in our dual-language program where they're learning both languages. And if you can just sort of like follow along with me for just a second, I don't mean to overcomplicate this, but if you're in a dual-language program, the challenge there is that instead of just learning English in one straight direction, you're learning English and Spanish in a little bit slower direction. And that can sometimes skew some of our data as it relates to attainment for ELA. I think that should be noted as we are a strong dual-language district, one that I think very much values that program. So the next slide that I prepared was relating to our first STAR math benchmark. So we do benchmark assessments that this allows us to kind of actually use this data in-house during the school year. The IAR, we give once a year, but our benchmark assessments, we give three times a year. And then for kids who are performing in the 30th percentile or 29th percentile and below, we provide additional resources for them to help boost that, that gap that you were mentioning ago, Mr. Hauptman, help close that gap. Here, I use the benchmark school years rather than putting all the school years, and at one time, I tried to simplify this a little bit. So you'll notice for math, grade three is the black bar, grade five is the gray bar, and then grade eight is the gold bar. In math, our kids in fifth and eighth grade, we have a large percentile that are below the norm, below that 35th percentile in that category. As you move towards the norm, which tends to be sort of like this bell-shaped curve, the first standard deviation is the 36th through, uh, 65th percentile, you see a smaller number of third through fifth grade students, but then you see some of the eighth-grade students performing quite well in both the norm and the above-norm categories for the first STAR benchmark. I will say that, like with any new assessment, there were some little nuances that tripped up a few kids with time and extended time and things of that nature. So kids who are in the 29th percentile and below have been given this assessment, or will be given this assessment, every six weeks to monitor their progress. And then when we come back from December, they will take their second benchmark, or when we come back from Thanksgiving break, they'll take their second benchmark assessment. At that time, we'll be able to get a gauge as to where our students started and then where our students ended within a timely manner, unlike the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, where we took the assessment in March and I got the assessment results in October. That doesn't help me. The STAR assessment helps us to, to gauge student growth and help kind of match student program as, as necessary. STAR reading, you see similar trends, with the exception of eighth grade. We see that at the, at the early onset, again, with this first assessment, we saw that a large number of our students are performing below the norm. I don't know that this is 100% accurate assessment data, and I'd like to, again, in the spring, like I typically do, share our year-long assessment data that's from in-house. I think at the end of last school year, I was able to share some of the math data with you guys as well, and I plan on doing the same with you as this, this year as well. Moving on. I wanted to just give you a snapshot. This is not a data point I have shared in the past, so this is something a little bit new. I wanted to share with you guys just a snapshot of what it looks like for the groups of students in ELA and math, math just in third grade that fall in between these categories, these below-norm, norm, and above-norm category. You will see that poverty tends to, to matter in our school district. And it, you see a larger number of students that are in poverty performing below the norm, and as you move up into the norm and above-norm categories, you see a fewer number of students in poverty in those categories. So our, you know, our huge challenge is to overcome those deficits for our, for our kids, you know, while also giving them the opportunity not to just be focused on ELA and math, but enjoy some of the other awesome things that they have an opportunity to do here, you know, like digital media arts, get involved in sports clubs, activity, music, and all the other great programs that we have, including our dual-language program. The second to last slide here is our report card results. You know, something that I think we're very proud of, despite the fact that we have significant challenges in our district, that all of our schools are commendable. They're commendable because our kids are growing well. Like I said, we may not have the highest attainment scores, but because 50% of our school report card is based on the fact that kids start with us and grow with us, that they're performing above state averages is, is a positive, a positive thing in this district. It makes me feel very proud that when our kids come here, I know each and every year they're growing better than average. Then last slide, I just tried to capture some of the strengths that we have and some of the potential opportunities we have for the future. Like I was just mentioning, students grow above national and state averages in this district. Our programming serves to, to meet the needs of all of our kids. We don't, and I've said this in the past, so pardon me for those of you who have heard it before, but we build our programs to the edges. We don't build it to the average. And I think it's important, and what I mean by that is you can see that our program and our, our student population is by no means average. That is not some nice clean bell-shaped curve. It's not. So we have to build our program to meet the needs of those kids who are coming from poverty, to meet kids who are challenged by language deficits. And so we, we build strong EL programs, RTI programs. We have what I consider a pretty beautiful, not perfect, but pretty beautiful dual-language program, and we have an advanced program for kids who are above the 80th percentile. We provide a consistent and viable curriculum. Over the last four and a half years, we've done, our teachers have done an outstanding job of working through the standards to develop learning frameworks in all core content areas, and now we're even digging into some new classes and continuing that through the arts and the, through the fine arts. Some of our opportunities, obviously, as you've seen in some of the graphs in charge we've had there, is to close that achievement gap and to increase the performance of our students that are EL or, you know, struggling from some of the deficits and poverty. And then, obviously, this year and in the future years, we wanted to use the STAR assessment to, one, improve our instructional practices, but it also allows us to progress, monitor students, unlike the IAR where we just test once a year. Our STAR assessment allows us to impact instruction pretty regularly because we provide the assessment on an ongoing basis. Despite the fact that we not, may not see the results in our IAR data, I do think it's important that we continue to strengthen our dual-language program. I think that program is invaluable as it relates to our students and their, their 21st century learning skills, you know, their focus on community and leadership, having those language skills is just extraordinarily important. And then we just want to continue to, to build our RTI programs and to make sure that those, the same resources, and this is obviously a challenge, right? Because when you're pulling minutes from one area, you're getting them in another. We want to be able to strengthen our math, our RTI program like we have our, our language programs. And so that's a challenge with there only being, you know, seven hours in a day. That sort of concludes that portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to take any, any questions that you guys might have. One of the things, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just share real quick, is in the past, I've shared some of the access data. The access format changed a little bit this year, and I did feel real confident in sharing the, the data in its form on the Illinois Report Card. One thing I will share with you, and if you want me to in future data, I'd be happy to try to unpack some of that data and get a better understanding. Our students exit the EL label at 8.6, or 8.3% per year in comparison to 8.6% as a state average. So we're very much on par with EL services in terms of exiting our students. Typically, when our students do exit the EL program, comes right in around the fourth and fifth grade. It tends to be that there's a, research shows that it takes about five to seven years for language learners to catch up to their English language peers, and it typically happens in our district, according to research. So last year, I think we had 30% of our fourth graders who were labeled EL pass the access test and are no longer labeled EL.
So encouraged by the growth numbers, and if that, if the business of overcoming Jerry Jones, things that are in place, but when we look at the opportunities here, overcoming the achievement gap, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big gap. So what are the conversations in terms of, how do we get the most bang for the buck to close that gap? Those, those students need, they need a lot to close that gap. So how, how are we addressing it now and looking to here in the far future? What are the conversations, what are the, what are the things that are happening? And what, as a board, you know, what, what can we do? What, what supports and encourages? And what, as board, what can we do, what supports and encouragement do we have?
Well, I wish I could offer you that sort of, that panacea, that silver bullet that would be able to remedy the situation. I think that if you want my honest opinion about how you begin to close those achievement gaps, you have to think about, I believe, think about schooling differently. I think we have to think differently about the way we school children in terms of our calendar year, the aquarium calendar, allowing for these long breaks for kids to slide back, especially students who are coming from poverty or students who don't have the rich experiences that are provided in the home, is daunting, because we once again deal with what is considered summer slide. So, to be honest, that's a challenge. And as much as, you know, Mr. Wilford and the summer programs team would love to be able to ensure that that doesn't take place, not all of those students come into our programs. So, one of the things I think would help would be to think differently about our calendar. I also think what would be significant is supporting our early learners. You know, I'm not sure how, you know, David, you're in education as well, like the analogy that there's a thirty million word gap between people who are middle-class and upper-class in terms of students who are in poverty, meaning that a kid between the ages of zero and three will often hear thirty million less words than a student who comes from an affluent background. And so, yet, the reality behind that is so many of our kids are coming to us without that rich environment. If we really want to make an impact, we need to think about pre-K education, schooling before pre-K and make that a priority in our district, you're asking us, you know, from the board level. But one of the real challenges, too, I think, is how do we maximize a seven-hour day with our children without completely boring them to tears and saying, "I hate school," when all you do is teach me English Language Arts and Math? If I could be honest, if you ask your children what they love about school, it's a lot of times, it's some of the more authentic, real experiences. And sometimes, you know, ELA and math aren't always there. For some of them, yes, it is. But for some of our kids, how do we, how do we structure a school day that allows them to get rich and valuable English Language Arts and Math, but that also doesn't sacrifice their stamina? Even now, one of the reasons our math scores are a little bit lower than our English Language Arts scores is we put considerable more time into English Language Arts, our EL resource program, our dual-language programs, than we do the hour of mathematics a kid gets a day. So, even there, you can see that there's a difference in educational outcome based on the resources that we provide to students. So, the, I know this is a long answer, but the reality behind closing the achievement gap is you have to provide additional resources in terms of time to be able to move a student beyond one year's worth of growth. And to do that, you have to think critically about their calendar, how many minutes do they get of instructional time in a day, and early pre-K opportunities. I would also say that I don't personally believe that the Illinois Assessment of Readiness provides an accurate depiction of what kids can, can do in terms of their learning. And so, I think having a more realistic view of what learning looks like for a child, be in terms of like authentic learning experiences, I think that might also change the way we look at what we determine to be successful. You know, so I recognize that we have a thousand kids that come into this district, and that's a thousand different variables. You know, every one of them is different and comes from all these, and then we put them through the schooling process and expect them to all come out the same way. And that's just not, it's just not, it's not going to happen unless we think a little bit differently about some of the things I was saying. And I would also say this, if there are, you know, if there are ideas that, that the board wants me to explore, look into, research, I'm always happy to do that. I mean, I think recognizing the importance of what Illinois calls like the whole child, the whole school, and the whole community is extremely important. What they mean by that is the set, the twenty percent of the waking hours that a child spends in school is equally as important as the other eighty percent that they're spending outside, and it impacts that other eighty percent. The other eighty percent impacts a child. So, there has to be another opportunity for us to dig into that eighty percent and find out what opportunities. And I don't think that they can be irrelevant to kids. They have to provide them with some enjoyable learning experiences. I don't see PMA here yet, so I'm like not too super worried about the bob in the look I would ordinarily get, which is, you know, hurry up. But, you know, like I said, I would, I'd be certainly, I mean, if you work in education, you know the challenges that we face. I would always be open to sitting down with anyone and having, you know, some small, small committee meetings, unpacking, brainstorming, putting together some ideas. I would, I would love that opportunity.
And I just want to add, because you also asked us about what are we doing, and I think you shared with us, you know, the, and so we now, we've got already the basis weekly just to talk about what's going on, how to show, and then also instructional ones and the data. And I know Dr. Black also has opportunities for them to maybe kind of further, definitely unpacking the standards, how kids are doing, and either matching it up, or we can generate some, or the more things we should be doing, or, you know, the working things. So, I think it's an ongoing conversation that we have. And we just, and we sort of can't control, you know, the children that come to us, you know, we just, we stay currently, the research and best practices, I mean, you know, how professional development is into that. I mean, this entire year is all this social emotional learning and how we can create a long, welcoming, safe environment for kids to be learning, or learning. And, you know, back Tuesday, we're going to talk about, we have, she's going to come in, and she's going to talk about creating social emotions for some of our, like literacy, and giving our staff literacy strategies that are grade-level specific. So, I think, you know, just having that ongoing dialogue and knowing that kids are growing.
And I appreciate that all of those things are taking place, and I also appreciate some of the things that you've just shared with us in terms of finding different ways to gauge students' learning, so that it isn't a drudgery of math problem after math problem, and those more authentic types of experiences. And I appreciate that the conversations are happening, and I think, though, that it's, you know, it's really important to keep those conversations going and for ideas to come from those conversations that you all are having here in the district, because, and to bring those to the board and give us the opportunity to support some of those ideas that are more ground up, because if we, as a board, had an idea that isn't, you talk about authentic, that's not authentic for the staff that you work with to say, "Well, the board wants this to happen." I would rather take it from the point of view is what do you all see, you who are working with these students day in and day out, what do you see here as the ways that we can address this gap, that we can put things into place and then bring that to us as a board and tell us how we can support it? But those are the things that are going to be authentic, you know, where everyone's involved. And I can't speak for all of the people sitting here, but I think I know most of their positions pretty well, that if that's what we want, we want opportunity for every kid, and we want every kid to have the chance to attain at the highest possible, you know, and, but not, not our job to decide what the programs are, but to hear those things sort of.
Yeah.
Program is a bad word, because this program sounds artificial and, you know, sterile and everything. But to have those things come from the people who live it and, and explain them the way to us that we're able to, to give you guys what we need.
Yeah, you know, and one of, and I very much appreciate that, I think, you know, I think as a group of educators, you know, we do a lot of brainstorming, we do a lot of problem solving, we do a lot of analysis of data and try to think differently about some things. I know that, you know, Chris and I this year spent a little bit of time putting together a little bit of a shift with the middle school program, and so, he and I had a conversation about recognizing that we have a large number of kids coming from fifth grade into sixth grade with lower reading levels. I mean, we saw the data, so we wanted to create a course that helps capitalize on our Spanish language art, our Spanish classes and our English Language Arts minutes in sixth grade. So, we increased our English Language Arts minutes in sixth grade by truncating Spanish into grades seventh and eighth. I'm talking about the elective Spanish, not a dual-language class, just the elective Spanish, so to speak, the Spanish that kids will take in high school as Spanish, one they take in seventh and eighth grade. But so, we created a very authentic learning experience called Communication Arts, where it has kids focused on listening, speaking, reading, and writing, tackling the, tackling the English Language Arts standards, but from a more personalized standpoint, something that is relevant and helps to motivate kids. So, they're looking into different geographies, places where they might go to visit or vacation, they're taking a look at elements of geography, and they're taking a look at potential college, universities, or career opportunities, and where those opportunities might exist. So, we're trying to build a bit more of an authentic curriculum for a group of students who might otherwise be bored by some of the regular English Language Arts courses. So, we're taking a look at the same standards, but thinking about it a bit more create, you know, creatively. And to sort of piggyback on what you're saying, and I much, you know, I very much appreciate the idea that we would, you know, be coming up with ideas, but I think, too, you know, going back to that eighty percent, the community, you know, you as board members, knowing the community and recognizing how there might be opportunities to build bridges, because some of our student groups and some of our populations in this community may not feel super comfortable in coming in and building that bridge with our school. So, if, again, just, you know, knowing that we're working together, Mr. Candela, it's hugely important to us for, you know, for those, for those types of community outreach events as well. Those are also, I think, hugely important to student performance when kids and their parents feel that this place is open and welcoming, and they're engaged, and they can come to parent-teacher conferences and call teachers and things of that nature. Those things are also hugely important to a student's, to a student's academic development.
May I just come in for a second? I agree with everything we're saying. I see things just that hinge, maybe our perspective is a little different. I see it almost backwards, that the narrative that I see is, is pretty positive. We're, you know, our grades, we've been graded as commendable, okay? So, I'm, it's almost starting from the last slide that we saw, okay?
Want me to put that up so we can highlight it?
We're seeing it as commendable. Now, if you go backwards to one of the first slides, we, here's where we started, no, no, keep going. Here's where we started, okay? And then with everything you're saying about the subgroups, now, the way that we got to commendable was through growth.
That is correct.
And now, if we go forward, particularly when you get to the math, no, back to, in math, we've sort of gotten to where, you know, we think of, or at least, I can't say what you think, but where I think, where I think is a, is a, is a pretty positive position is on the curve. And, yeah, we're, I would imagine, we're not where we want to be on reading, but, you know, we've made progress and here's where we are. And everything that Davis and that you have said is all, are all great ideas to get us to improve in those areas that we, that we need to improve in. So, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to twist data to make it fit a narrative, but I just, I just wanted to clarify a narrative as I was seeing.
Yeah.
I just, it was just maybe a little frustration that as I saw it and I saw what was happening, I just didn't see it playing out. I saw it playing out on a more negative side, and I thought that it was, than that it warranted, than that it, than that it ended up back in the end.
Yeah, and I, I will say that this is the way it ends up for me, because I know that we're taking kids from where they start, we're meeting them where they're at, we're caring for them, we're loving them, we're teaching them, and they're growing. They're all growing at or above state averages, and I think, to me, that is hugely important. The challenge of overcoming the achievement gap is a year-over-year process. I mean, you know very well, it's a year-over-year process, and we're going to continue to plug along. I do love the idea of brainstorming. I do love the idea of thinking a little bit differently and outside the box. I, I think that those are the answers, and we might not have the resources to get there, but I do think that those are the answers, some of the things I mentioned before about thinking differently about our calendar and differently about pre-K education, and thinking about differently about the way we truly define what is authentic learning. And so, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Hav.
Do you think, I know that STAR was made this fall, I know that there were some kind of bumps there, but do you think instead of waiting until like May or June to give us kind of an update, we could get just an update or like a D grade after the next STAR test, just to see, like, are you seeing differences? Do you think that maybe the first test had different result, you know, if there's maybe a different story there, or just to see kind of how that went?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. I could probably have that ready in January. I don't remember what date our January meeting is, but we're taking the next STAR assessment right after Thanksgiving, so I can unbundle some of that data and put together a few slides if that works for you.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be no problem. And then I could do that in either January or early February, whenever that fits.
Now, I am giving you that look because.
I saw, sorry, I wanted.
Thank you, Steve.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So, our second presentation evening is a little bit pan se, from Rick James, who's going to, the presentation is actually packed, so Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to review that, if you just want to kind of reference it, but we have what you shared with us, because it's in the packet for the board.
Great. What did you say?
There is also, podium board, everyone is standing, we're going to have a ball.
Thank you.
Any board members that haven't met before Elizabeth was with us, please look over, talking, and it's our chief of management, Rick James, who is our consultant for our faculty. So, she's going to share with us some options as far as possibly financing some future facility projects as we go forward. So, welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much, and this is such a beautiful room, I have to tell you. Last time I was here, I was in the gym, so congratulations. I mean, wonderful, this is, this is going on. So, what I'd like to share with you tonight is, Erin Vida shipped for me a So what I'd like to share with you tonight is, Erin, are you going to shift for me?
Oh, you know what? We just had the presentation patch in the, in their packet.
Okay, good.
If that's okay.
That's fine. So let's go to page four and we'll look at the interest rates. The good news is that interest rates are super low. They've come down over 125 basis points or 1.25% over the last six months. After we've had Fed increases in 2017 and 2018, almost six times, we've had the Fed kind of changed direction of rates down as we kind of encounter some of the troubles in our economy like the trade wars. So even though that's bad for the economy, it's good for the bond market. Page five deals with some of those events and some of those rate increases and then subsequent decreases since November, summer of 2018. So we're in really great spot, rates are lower than they were pre-election 2016. So let's go next to page seven, and we'll look at the district's debt profile. You have two issues outstanding, both of which were approved by the voters as part of the 11.4 million record agenda. So those bonds matured in 2037 and the 2017 bonds will be callable in 2026. So as we get closer to that date, we'll look for opportunities to perhaps refund those proceedings with these low rates. Next, page eight is your statutory debt limit. Your debt limit is 8.6 million. So that is 6.9% of your current equalized success value. So you definitely have debt available. The next page is your working cash fund limit. Now, this is for working cash bonds, which is a type of non-araclan bond. Those bonds can only be paid back from your debt service extension base, which is part of the tax cap, came into being around 1994. Unfortunately, the district's debt service extension base is very small. So let's go to page 10 and we'll look at what that is. So you can issue up to 7.1 million of working cash bonds, but you can only pay back around 90 to 100,000 of principal and interest in year. So, and that, if we look at the column on page 10, four from the left, it says debt service extension base. Here in 2019 levy year, it's 89,166. So each year that grows with CPI, that goes back to 1994. The dollars that you had on a tax levy for, for debt at that time were probably around 80,000, then CPI increased that amount to 2,009. We expect CPI to increase going forward, but you can see, you know, on average, about 100,000 dollars a year is not really enough to leverage any significant amount of debt. But as time goes on, it'll be something there for you. The way to get that bigger is to go to the voters, which I know you've just been to the voters for 11.4 million, so that's probably not a possibility. So page 11 is just a graphic of the debt payment that you've got. And again, those are done in 2035 levy year. Section, page 12 and 13, look at another type of fund. These are called debt certificates. And the great thing about debt certificates is they do not increase property taxes at all. They're paid from your existing operating funds and you need to budget for those payments on an annual basis, which is just part of your budget. It's very important when you look at debt certificates to think about how much can we afford in our budget? So Eric and I have had some preliminary conversations about that and we will have some options to share with you in a minute. The other thing about debt certificates, they can only be issued for capital projects, capital projects and equipment. They cannot be issued for paying salaries or operations. They are also part of your statutory debt limit, so they will count against your debt limit. And anytime you issue funds, you need to think about, expect to pay them back in three years. So you can't just keep the money in your funds. So what conservative approach we like to think about with debt certificates is a 10 year repayment. You can pay them back over a maximum of 20 years, but when you think about paying things out of your operating funds and the pressures that Illinois schools may face or may not, whether it be a tax freeze or some sort of pension shift, that's why we like to keep it short, so you're somewhat flexible. But you could go out to a maximum of 20 years. So Eric and I looked at three options for you. The first is if you're able to budget 300,000 a year in your operating funds budget. This can come from a combination of O and M, education fund, using working cash transfers. The only funds you can't use are IMRI or transportation, those are purpose specific. So if we pay these back over 10 years at 300,000 a year, at today's interest rates, with a cushion to be conservative, you could generate about 2.6 million dollars. So I'm not sure what amount you're looking at, but that's the 300,000 a year for 10 years. The next option on page 15 looks at budgeting 400,000 a year. So in this case, you could generate just under 3.5 million. So one thing we'd like to do is keep the payments the same each year for easy budgeting, so they're not increasing or decreasing. And again, we chose in 10 years just to give you flexibility in the future. You could go out a little longer, you could pay it off shorter. The next option is looking at 450,000 a year. If you budget that for 10 years, as shown on page 16, you could get just under 4 million or 3,954 of these interest rates. So something to think about. I've been talking for a while, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. One detail I may add is the bonds, to issue these, you only need a resolution of the board. There's no public hearing, no requirement, no petitions or anything like that, simply just a resolution.
And I will point out that the current projections that I've shown you have anywhere between 300,000 and 40,000 dollars for just the operations of the maintenance fund. So I didn't touch anything for working cash, because Mrs. Sessas pointed out, we use a combination of old funds to fund this.
So what we initially thought was present these options to you and then go back and discuss them with Elizabeth and then present our recommendation to you at the December board meeting. And then we can decide from there, you know, what the board would like to do with, as Mrs. Sessas said, that just is going to take board action. So would you like to take action on our recommendation in December or would you prefer to do it in the January board meeting? Is December a better time?
I guess I just wanted to ask you, is there any length of time for it to be issued? So these debt certificates, sort of, how long?
It's about four weeks, about a four week process. So that we incorporate one board meeting. And you know, whatever's more convenient for you. January's always a good time to issue, it's kind of a slower month in terms of supply. So either December or January is great.
January would be great. That would help us get traction from you and then start working with staff as far as the projects that we wanted to, communicating out to them, setting a plan in place, working with our construction partners and then also getting on the schedule for summer work. So that would fall in line. If we send the actions to you in December, discuss them as a board and then take action in January. And if you think of any questions, you know, as you process or digest the information from now until the December meeting, you feel free to send them to Eric and myself and we can board on, if you choose.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to our business agenda, we have two items for action tonight. And then we have a review of some of the policy changes under press. So the first is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered TV and are not controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, assistant, who should stand support, vote on any item or items. That item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. A result, the Diamond Lake District 76 Work Education exception approves the omnibus vote agenda, items seen through E and C level. May I have a motion to approve? Sullivan? Andola?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Yell?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Luzzada?
Yes.
And moving on to our state schools resolution. Whereas all children in the United States have the right to a free and appropriate public elementary and secondary education, regardless of their or their parents' actual or perceived national origin, citizenship or immigration status. And whereas the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District 76, Lake County, Illinois, embraces its responsibility to welcome and educate all students and uphold its mission to provide an excellent and equitable education in every classroom for every student, every day. And whereas the board is committed to ensuring that district's schools and facilities are safe and welcoming places for all students and their families, where students are able to focus on their education and be secure in knowing that the district will support their safety and emotional well-being, regardless of immigration status, ethnicity, national origin, race or religion. And whereas families have expressed their concern about sending their children to school out of fear that deportation will occur while their children are in school or that immigration officials remain at all our schools. And whereas the district cannot and does not inquire regarding the immigration status of a student or the student's parents and or guardians as part of the admissions process. And whereas U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE policy characterizes public schools as sensitive locations where immigration enforcement, enforcement actions such as detentions, arrests, interviews, searches or surveillance typically should not occur unless the situation involves exigent circumstances. Such matters concerning national security or terrorism, an imminent risk of death or violence or physical harm to any person or property, immediate arrest or pursuit of a dangerous felon, or an imminent risk of destruction of evidence, material to an ongoing criminal case. And to date, the district has not had any contact by federal immigration authorities. And whereas the board finds it is in the best interest of its students, staff, families and community to assure all students and families that the district will take lawful action to guard against disruptions to the educational environment that immigration enforcement actions may create. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District 76, Lake County, Illinois as follows. The board reaffirms its commitment to provide an equal opportunity for all district students to attend and enjoy the opportunities and benefits available in our schools regardless of ethnicity, race, religion, national origin or immigration status, and to be free from harassment and intimidation. In its continued commitment to the protection of student privacy, the district will continue to refrain from acquiring about our students' immigration status. The district shall do everything in its lawful power to protect our students' confidential information and ensure that our students' learning environments are not disrupted by immigration enforcement actions, including the following. All district employees shall immediately contact to their tenant or designated upon receipt of any request by a federal, state or local agent or officer attempting to enforce federal immigration laws for entry into any district school or other district property, be and communicate with any student while that student is under the supervision of the district during any school activity or while using district transportation, or seek for any information about our students. No request will be granted until it has been reviewed by a superintendent or designated. In reviewing and responding to said requests, the superintendent or designated will not allow access to our students unless required to do so by law. For example, access to any student typically will be denied unless the official presents a valid search warrant issued by a federal or state judge or magistrate or the official specifies that exigent circumstances are present. In responding to requests for student information, the superintendent or designated will ensure compliance with the Family of Judicial Rights and Privacy Act, purple, the Illinois School Student Records Act, ISSRA, and any other applicable limitation on disclosure. The district shall provide training and additional resources and meeting for its existing crisis and emergency response teams in order to help support the safety and well-being of our students who may be impacted by immigration enforcement actions. The district shall post this resolution at its school sites and distribute it to district staff and parents in the predominantly used languages of the district. This resolution shall be of force and effect upon its adoption. May I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Luzzada?
Yes.
Ralla?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Yell?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on to our last item on our business agenda, and that is the review of Press Plus Issue 102. There are a number of policies there that we will be voting on at our December 17 meeting. I don't know if anyone has any questions or wants to discuss anything now. There's, obviously, as usual, there's a number of footnote changes and citation changes, but there also are changes to some actual policies. So does anyone have any questions or want to discuss anything specific? Okay. So like I said, we will revisit this at our December meeting and in the interim, please take your time to review the documents. Okay, that concludes our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion.
So there's two items, we just kind of went right here. Actually, the first one is enrollment study. We were contacted by District 75 and 120, who are currently engaging in an enrollment study. And the last one, Ms. Rogers and I looked at was done in 2013. So that we did in the district, we also did it as a collaboration with some other districts. It's good for another 10 years, so it will be, you know, it's valid until 2023. We thought we could just share, A, and let Eric kind of share the details of the cost of the partnership to do an enrollment study. It would be, you know, it would be starting now and that would be good for another 10 years, so it would go up to 2021, 2030. So Eric, do you want to share a little details and maybe just the benefits of doing, engaging in something right now, you really still have four years left for the expiration of the current study?
Yeah, so the, the original enrollment study, or the last enrollment study, we did with SARDA, really was in collaboration with our 10-year facility plan that we did to think how we, we estimated enrollment was going to drop. It's all about this year and it was going to have a very moderate increase for the next few years. So as of any enrollment projection, or any projections in general, the longer you've got, the less accurate it is. So I, I think this is around the right time to start looking at doing another study. So District 120 was really the driver behind the beginning of this stuff. They were very interested in it. They asked if we had similar interests. So we started doing some cost estimates and reached out to a few different companies. So for each District 75 and 76, the cost would be $7,600 and District 120 would be responsible for about $10 a dollar. So it is a, a large cost, but it's substantial savings if we were to do this ourselves. The last time we did this, SARDA, six other districts. So we did some kinds of scale, combining our, our resources that way. And I think especially with our, combining our schools, both in bear given at the moment, we have three, or at least we have seed all currently, I think it's probably an appropriate time to go out, get updated projections, see where trends are going to be headed. And that would be also good, maybe to support yourself and our facility to more continually release in the next few years. I would point out that information, I thought it popped up at a good time with our shift division.
Can you explain what an enrollment study is in terms of, and how they perform it from a, from a, from a?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think it may be beneficial to have them come out and describe the process in detail, because I can kind of give you some more generalities as far as what they do. I've worked with SARDA one time and, you know, really they do do a very in-depth analysis as far as going from wide birth history with the surrounding area to any new housing developments. They'll look at average ages of houses, the resale market of people moving out and that age, estimating families moving in. It's very, very detailed. They provide a lot of a good summary report that they presented to us. But they essentially will take all the demographic data that is available, both public and private, and kind of wrap it up as far as what they think, how many new students they're going to be here. So I'm sorry, just kind of giving some vague generalities about it, but I would encourage But I would encourage board members, what they kind of come to think of, you know, over your gap, just because it is a very large cost. Because that reflects the amount of hours that you're going to do it for. Because it is about, it'll be at least two or three months data gathering process. So we wouldn't expect to have this report until summer anyway.
And I want to talk to you both more about that area where the old binars is and, you know, when the lights start to come out, different types of development there. Have you heard anything about that area?
I haven't heard specifically. It's really been, we talked about this commercial residential development. But I think as you mentioned, my lines, I believe what I see, probably say a little more.
Sure. It would just make me concerned to spend a lot of money here and then, you know, like this kind of a somewhat of a big area for us to stretch and not having any idea what we're going to do there.
Well, and that's, when you go out ten years with projections, they do do a lot of, you know, estimations. Exactly. So for instance, last time they presented three scenarios, it's kind of an A, B, and C scenario. And each one has a little more regressive approach to it as far as, they would take, you know, one scenario, we would take full development of residential complex. We want to adopt that as our official enrollment projections. Maybe not, we're making a mix of a few other ones. So it is a very hands-on approach when you develop this. So there would be a lot of info we have as far as how optimistic we are to think of some of their developments.
Okay. Do you think we've got the initial for us to contact District one twenty if they wanted to do like a joint presentation and be presented to their board and that had their president on the board here, something that you're interested in?
We've heard hearing more about the study.
What's been tailored, you know, why the cost is so high and how we've done it there? Yeah, I do, I mean, I, I would be willing to explore what's wrong with it. I just kind of hear what's going on, what to do since then. Set that up for you there, December, January.
And then the second item for discussion is, I believe we shared with you that from mid-October to mid-November, we had a survey available for our parents and our community members to let us know what kind of communication and or how did we like communication from school. So Mr. Hanson, plus you, the survey together is far as also their language preferences and then the different type of modalities that we use, mobile phone, laptops, tablets, or iPads, paper. And people, plus you, designated which they prefer. As you can see, majority of them can both languages prefer and follow. And then it goes through question by question. And I think we had, Eric, can you just remind me again how many people participated?
We had two hundred and twenty-six.
Which is double the participants that we had last year, which is great. We sent out platform reminders. We had actually, the different venue that we use is kind of two, is having it go up on teachers. So teachers were reaching out specifically to families and sending it with their daily or weekly communications as well as through the principal weekly updates and then our own school messenger reminders. Then I think if you recall, we're often going to include this when families register next year. So this will be part of the registration packet where they'll come in and designate how they want their communication, what language they want their communication. So as you can see, Eric's a really nice child, we're breaking everything down. So I don't know if you guys had any questions. I know communication is one of our goal areas and it's something that we are always trying to improve continuously. So if there's just any feedback, but we just wanted to make you aware that we are standing on top of it, watching the data and then also responding to our families, how they want the information.
Now, may I, this is very cool. Is this, is the ultimate that we're going to end up personalizing the communication vehicles by family? Or is it that we're going to, we're going to keep the few that seem to be most appealing and not worry about the ones that seem to have the worst appeal?
I think we're always going to accommodate all for families. So there's not one specific modality. So by looking at, for instance, preferred method of communication, what devices typically they're using. It's very important from the technology perspective to ensure that whatever communication we're using will accommodate all sorts of devices so that it's not targeted to one. And we typically do that, our websites, responsive phones. We utilize the most common, in addition to communicating out on common platforms, we utilize social media because we want to make sure that information's coming to families indirectly as well as opposed to speaking without. So I'm very excited about implementing some of these question techniques within registration because then you get a hundred percent of families' responses and feedback and they'll help us communicate even more clear to all our families.
So I think it's like, I mean, maybe if you can add on to that, like, something that's a regular communication, like a link, like every, first Monday of every month, we do a link, sir. We used to do email, voicemail, and text. Now we're just doing text and voicemail because we see that that's what most people want. So we've kind of just eliminated email, only because it's just a regular occurrence. It happens every month. So those are the kind of things we're kind of just looking at, so that we're not overbearing with the information, especially if it's something more regular. But if it's something that's coming out to promote an event, or for example, parent teacher conferences, you're going to get the phone, you're going to get the email, and you're going to get the text. You're going to get flyers, you're going to get, you know, and then like I had shared earlier, the principals and the teachers know which families want and require paper copies of communication. So we make sure to personalize that to them as well.
Excellent.
Hey Eric, so you're showing your preferred method of information, receiving information. Does your data tell me about the preferred method of receiving data? You know, do you have stats? You have, I think you have access to be able to determine what more popular that people, the medium sort of more popular that people receive our message.
Okay. I think that's actually utilized within here. So for instance, receiving on slide five. The data we're seeing, most commonly is receiving message from a family perspective would not be, social media has always, has never been like the first, but that's, we want to always make sure it is going out to all our families because sometimes it comes too naturally. It comes to you as you're relaxed. But phone communication, email, text, I mean, they're very, they generally, email and texts are most common. A lot of times, you gotta pick up the phone to listen to a message. A lot of us want to be able to receive it and listen, or view it at our own pleasure, email or text. And that looks like it's, text messages specifically look like a very most common. But we also need to make sure that with our mass communication systems, when we send out texts, that our families are involved in that. Because last thing you want to do is make sure that we send that out and somebody's not involved in that message.
Those were two items that we had on your board discussion. Do you not have any for your request? Moving on to notices and communication.
Really, items B through E are just for your information and your review. Daisy continues to work with District one twenty and seventy-five on our partnership of, you know, valuable parents and advisory council. So as you can see, there is one that's coming up in January that she's working on with District seventy-five and one twenty to encourage community involvement as well as the Welcome Center flyer. So that is going to, that has gone on already. One of the regular hours for our families are a daily items for the Welcome Center. And then the Seidel Government Board Summary from November is included for your review as well as their November twenty nineteen newsletter. So include those for your review. And one of the things that I wanted to share is we are kind of reorganizing, in addition to the community involvement that we're working on with District one twenty and seventy-five. And I know Dr. Myers referred to it in his presentation last week, is our partnership with the Welcome Center and the holiday events. So we just, Daisy and I have been meeting with them earlier today. And December fourteenth, we are creating or establishing a holiday mart. And that's going to be an, and so information will be coming out next week at parent teacher conferences as well as the next couple of weeks for any families or community members, parents or staff members that want to donate items for the Welcome Center. We are going to run that for two weeks and that could be clothing, toys, books, shoes, household items, food, hygiene products, so that all those specifics will come out in fire. We'll collect them at each of our schools up until December eleven. And then we'll do a volunteer drive and take everything over to the Welcome Center and then have that open. I believe the hours were decided to be ten to eleven thirty for District Seventy-six. All items will be at middle o'clock for our families to meet them. There'll be complimentary gift wrap. And we'll partner with the P T O, they're going to provide some treats for our families so that the child might have some treats at the same time. And then later that afternoon, we're going to do a combination with District Seventy-five, a code drive. So it'll be a great day around the holidays. And this is taking place instead of the Holiday Helpers and the Cheers for Children. So we feel that it's a better kind of reorganization and utilization of our resources and still gets people involved, not only from the staff and community aspect, but also for our families who require that support. So more information will be seen coming out next week. And those, that's all the items that we have?
Public comments on manage of items. Do we have any public comments this evening on manage of items? Okay, moving on to others. Do we have any others this evening? Okay, then we will now move into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to move into executive session? Andela? Luzzada? Armenta? Yell? Hoffman? Juan? Yes? Sullivan?